Hello, hello, welcome to She's Connected. This is the group for the overwhelmed, stressed out moms who need to pause. And connect to God herself and her kids. If that's you, you're in the right place. And I'm kind of giggling because I asked the kids to shut my office door. And some of the kids thought I said shove the door. So they were like shove the door. And they were like laughing at me. And I was like shut the door is what I meant. Okay? Oh goodness. Okay. So where are you watching from? Let me know in the comments whether you're watching live, and I think the live is going or that replay. Remember Facebook's always weird. It never shows up right. And you know, get in the comments. So I know you're here and hopefully I can see them. I'm Cherry, mom of nine plus baby on the way. Oh, we're getting closer. Baby is 28 weeks now. That's the third trimester for sure. And the baby's as big as a roller blade. Oh my goodness. Are we gonna be rolling through to a delivery or what? It's right around the corner and the holidays are coming up. So I'm looking forward to giving birth to a baby. What about you? What are you excited about? What are you looking forward to in the next three months? Let me know that in the comments. I'm in Springfield, Missouri, inspiring families and moms like you to live a life connected to God. Let's plug into what he has for us because what he has for us is amazing. And when we actually focus on him, then we see more of him in our lives. Hi Tina, thank you for stopping by. She lives in Michigan. I love my Michigan friends and family. It's awesome. And this week's topic is the JXP Acts material, Give Good Away. We're talking about Peter healing the crippled man or beggar, if you want to say that. It was a different time back when Jesus walked on the earth and after Jesus left, when the disciples were establishing the church. When you were a crippled person, you were unclean and you were set aside. You were not supposed to be touched. You were not supposed to go into the temple. This means that you were disconnected from God. And this crippled man was sitting on the sidelines. And what is Peter gonna do? We're gonna see in Acts three. Welcome to High Five Friday. How did you practice following Jesus this week? You know, let me know in the comments if you had anything special happen. And I'm gonna try to share my screen here. Just to give you an overview of these practices that we're working on with JXP. And we're trying to experience Jesus. And we can do that by following these practices, reading our Bible or you know, daily reading. We have missional impulse or I like to call it Holy Spirit activation. Cause you get to open your ears to the Holy Spirit. You get to feel the Holy Spirit. You get to do or work out what the Holy Spirit is touching in you. That's an awesome one for me. I love it. And last week, we talked a lot about the next one because we do it a lot in community. When we're together with people, we share meals. Did you eat with anyone this week? And what I really want to touch on today is a little challenge. If you did eat with someone, that's awesome. But I want to challenge you the next time you gather to eat anything with people, when you share a meal or food. I challenge you to take it a step further. When you share that food with someone again, ask them about what God is doing in their life. And then you can also share and talk about what God is putting on your heart too. And they might be surprised at first. You might notice this because it's kind of an odd question. You don't have to word it like this. You can use your own wording. But we had some friends over and I asked the mom like, okay, so what is God speaking to you this week? And she was set back a little bit like, wait a minute, what? You're talking about what God is doing in my heart and in my life? And they might like think that's weird at first, but then when we start conversing about all these things that are happening in our lives, the connection was amazing. And the vulnerability, she started to open up more and talk about not just the happy things that God's doing in her life, but some of the things that she was struggling with that God was helping her through. And that was amazing. So I want you to challenge yourself to open up a little bit. Break that ice. Talk about God when you're sharing food. It just makes the whole sharing meal experience more exciting and fun and like worth it. We didn't just gather here to eat a picnic. We are gonna make it special. And the next one is Give Good Away. This is the title for this week. So we'll be exploring this today. And the last one, talk about what Jesus is doing. And I think honestly, we can integrate this practice into all of the other practices. When you are reading the Bible and something hits you, talk to Jesus about it. Talk to God about it. When you are sharing a meal with people, talk about what Jesus is doing in your life. When you are handing over items or giving people things, pray for them. Talk about how this experience made you feel. Like, let's say you dropped some things off at Goodwill. Well, talk to your kids or spouse or people in your life about that experience. It wasn't just I dropped this off. You make it worth it. You make it more special. Cause it's not just about getting rid of my stuff. It's about trying to bless people with it and that kind of thing. So I think that one's a really big one. Talking about what Jesus is doing in your life. People want to hear what Jesus is doing in our lives. And sometimes we think that it doesn't matter. But honestly, it is like one of the top priorities. What God is doing in your life. I want to hear about it. Tell me in the comments, what is he doing in your life? Do a post in our group about some things that God is speaking to you or what is happening in your life and how God is working you through that. So that would be awesome to hear in the comments. I just want to know what practice have you experienced this last week? And I'm gonna stop sharing now. Here we go. And also, what about God? God's surprises. Did he surprise you this week? Let us know about that in the comments because whenever God like surprises us with something and we share it with other people, then they start to pick up on God's little surprises too. And it's pretty awesome when we get to share that with each other. Maybe right now you can't even remember what happened this last week. Cause sometimes I forget too. I'm like trying to live my life, get through each day. And then a kid comes in on our live, which he's not allowed to. Oh boy. I explained every single step before my live of what he was able to do. And he still comes in asking, can we do this? Okay. Life, it gets in the way. And then we forget about what happened the last week. It happens to be all the time. I actually have a lot of trouble remembering to send the messages that I write. Um, some, sometimes God puts a person on my heart or I have to get back to a person because they asked me a question. And I write this response and a kid interrupts me and I put it down or I get out of that, that app or whatever. And then I forget to get back to it. So if you're forgetful like me, maybe you need a little reminder or maybe you can think a little bit closer to right now, like maybe not last week. Think about yesterday or think about today. What happened today where God surprised you a little bit? And we want to hear about those surprises either in the comments or in a post in our group. Because our lives are busy. And when we slow down and we share the experiences that we have with God, with each other, then we can have more growth, I think is the word I'm looking for. And we, we strive for more of God, but then we come up with excuses about, well, we don't have enough time or we can't do that, or that wasn't that important. It is important. All the things that God's doing in your life are important. And when you share them with other people and they start to realize those moments in their life too. So I challenge you. Slow down and take a moment to really think about, you know, was there a time this last week, yesterday, this morning? Where God surprised you and share it with us. Because we all want to celebrate your wins and God moving in your life is a huge win. And even if it's the tiniest of things. I was trying to think of a super tiny thing. And the first thing that came to my mind is when I was on the toilet. And I didn't know if you really want to hear this story, but we all go on the toilet. And when we're on the toilet, that's a time when it's a little bit more private and so God can speak to you. Oh, but anyways, it wasn't really the toilet. That's the part of the story. It's the, the, the thing that God put on my heart while in the bathroom. That was amazing. And he brought back this picture that I had in my women's group about control. And he just put a surrender, surrender that word on my heart. And then I kind of just started like journaling about surrender and what that does for us. And so maybe I'll share that and in a post on its own. Because it was pretty amazing for myself, like we want to control things. We freak out about the unknown. Well, I do anyway. But let me know in the comments if you freak out about the uncertainty or the unknown. And I have this baby coming and I am uncertain about the actual labor, when it's gonna happen, where are my kids gonna be? Am I gonna have a car? Is Ted gonna be at work? Like all the things? And I can freak out about it. But God, he's right here with me. He already knows how this baby is gonna be born. It's already planned. And, and now I just got off on a tangent about some of the things God is doing in my life. We're supposed to focus here. Was there a time when you felt the Holy Spirit moving? Or you knew that God was there with you? It could be when you're on the toilet like me. Let us know in the comments. Or at least think about it yourself and definitely smile because God loves you. Alright, so now we're diving into today's material. The disciples were giving away all that they had to live out this mission of Jesus in its new like spirit filled form. Okay, so Jesus is gone. And now we have the Holy Spirit. And how do we live this out? And that's what the disciples were doing right here in Acts chapter three. It continues with even more surprises. So in Acts three, we read about this one surprise where Peter and John were on their way to the temple. And they ran into a crippled beggar, a crippled man, someone who could not walk. And they themselves were poor. They didn't have anything. They, they sold everything. They didn't have anything to offer. They couldn't even give this man food or money or clothes. Yet there is one thing that they did have. So Peter pulls him to his feet and the man is miraculously healed. People are filled with wonder and amazement around them. The people who saw it. It all started with Peter noticing a need and then offering what he did have. So he didn't think about, he didn't see the man and think about all the things he couldn't give him. And I don't know about you guys, but I do that myself. I will see someone on the corner of the street and I will think about how I don't have food to give. I am barely making it feeding my own kids. And I don't have money to give because I don't keep cash on myself. And so like, we can focus on the wrong things. But Peter noticed this need and then he didn't think about what he couldn't give. He thought about what he did have. And what he does have is amazing. It was God. God, oh Tina, in the comments, God is always with us, even on the toilet. That's right. That's like an even more special time for me because usually the kids are, you know, a little distance away. The toilet, such a special place. How about the car? What are some other places where we kind of forget that God's with us and we could be spending time with him, but we are like frazzled or in a rush or whatever. Like when you are in the grocery line at the store. For some reason they have, you know, 80 cash registers, but only two are open. And so you have to wait in this big long line and you're just like, my milk is gonna go bad and my ice cream is gonna melt. Maybe if you have ice cream. And you're just thinking about getting home and why is this line so long and all the things? When this is an opportunity that we can spend with Jesus. In our cars is another one. I know so many people are driving. I'm driving a lot less nowadays. But when I am driving, we can get stuck in that rush of traffic and getting to where we're going instead of actually realizing, you know, God's with us. And around us and he's with the other people in the vehicles. Sometimes people are crazy drivers. I don't know if you guys come across that either. But my husband drives in between his calls. He's a repair technician and he tells me almost every day about some kind of possible accident or this crazy driver. We're distracted a lot and we don't focus on our driving and we can be crazy drivers. We could experience crazy drivers. But we could also be praying for those people and we could be praying for our protection that whole time. Like in the car, I think is a good time to spend with God, not just on the toilet. And I, we can spend time with him anywhere, but those were just the top ones that came to my mind. You let me know of any other ones. So back to our story about Peter. He noticed a need and then he offered what he did have. It was not what this man had expected to receive either. Like he is begging for whatever he can get. And it's probably usually scraps or something super tiny. So he's not expecting to be healed. He was expecting this small token, but then he received so much more. The ways of Jesus are filled with stories like this. It is the way the good news transforms lives through those who are willing to notice and give good away. So through Peter, through this action, Peter was able to share the hope and forgiveness found in Jesus. With the crowd around him, with this man, with the other disciples. All this was a witness of something amazing. In the next chapter, we'll get to see what happens to those around us as we live out the ways of Jesus each day. But now we're gonna read from Acts three. Now, the whole passage is verses one through 26, but we're gonna focus on verses six through eight. And we're going to read them in the lecto divina practice. That's reading it three times. And remember the first time we're thinking with our head, what does this make me think? The second time is with our hearts, what does this make me feel? And then the third time is with our hands, uh, we're going to do and put it into action in our own lives. So here we go. Acts, chapter three, verses six through eight. Peter said, "I don't have any silver or gold, but I do have something else I can give you. By the power of Jesus Christ from Nazareth, stand up and walk." Then Peter took the man's right hand and lifted him up. Immediately, the man's feet and ankles became strong. He jumped up, stood on his feet and began to walk. He went into the temple with them, walking and jumping and praising God. Now back in this time, like I said, um, you were allowed to enter a temple if you were unclean. And this man was just that because he was crippled. He couldn't walk. So what does this make you think? I feel like it reminds me of like when my kids have a stuffy nose or when I stub my toe. We kind of take for granted that we can breathe every day until we get a cold or a stuffy nose. And then we can't really breathe that well. And we start to complain and whine about not being able to breathe. When we just were able to breathe for the past 60 days or whatever it was, that time period where it was okay to breathe. Our bodies, we walk around and we take for granted how much our toes help us. And then we stub our toe. And then it's painful and it hurts. And then we realize when we go to walk the next day or two, that that toe is painful and it hurts because I'm using it to balance myself. Our bodies are amazing, but when they're in pain or something is hurting you, then you, you really start to focus on that pain and that hurt and you start to cry. Or maybe you don't cry, but I'm just thinking of my kids and they like crying, whine about this thing that normally functions in a great way, but then they heard it. So now they're crying and moaning. I mean, when we're sick, we don't feel the greatest and we want to feel better. And we're just like, why me? And why does this hurt? And sometimes we forget about our bodies when we're healthy and we don't thank God for that health. So just on that flip side, you know, um, that's what this got me thinking about. What are we gonna do if we get healed? Like if someone miraculously healed you and you no longer had that hurt toe, you no longer had that stuffy nose or whatever is painful for you. Pregnancy comes along with lots of, I don't know what to call them ailments or something, you know, symptoms of my body doing what it's supposed to do, but it's quite painful. Or like little kids have growing pains or older people have lots of arthritis and things for joints. And it doesn't just have to be older people. Our bodies are bodies and they break down sometimes. And if you had an ailment or pain or you were suffering in some kind of way physically, what would you do if you were miraculously healed? Would you jump up? Would you go to the temple? Would you go to church? Would you praise God for that moment? We'd like to think that we would praise God because something amazing happened to us and we're healed. And maybe in that first instant, you might be like, thank you, God. But then we forget about it. What about the next time we have a stuffy nose? We don't think about that last time that God healed me from that stuffy nose. We just moan and groan about this time. So I guess that's what's in my brain and my head, what I'm thinking about. It's like, okay, so this guy was miraculously healed. I can't believe he went into the temple with them. That's amazing. And he's praising God. He's leaping for joy. Are we leaping for joy when God does these amazing things in our life? Okay, second time reading through. Now we're gonna go to the heart and how we feel. Peter said, "I don't have any silver or gold, but I do have something else I can give you. By the power of Jesus Christ from Nazareth, stand up and walk." Then Peter took the man's right hand and lifted him up. And immediately the man's feet and ankles became strong. He jumped up, stood on his feet and began to walk. He went into the temple with them, walking and jumping and praising God. What does this make you feel? I mean, I can relate to Peter at the very beginning of this. I often feel like I don't have money or things to give. When I see someone, I feel like, well, I don't have that cash on me. I can't hand you money. I don't have food with me and I have a lot of kids to take care of. So sometimes I feel like I can't spare food. And I do have that little regret of being able to provide for someone who's in need. But we don't just have to give food or money. There's lots of things that we do have. So this is guiding me to understand the power of the Holy Spirit is with me. And God is the greatest thing that I can share with people. So that's what's coming up for me. What about you? Let me know in the comments. What does it make you feel? And now we're gonna read through the third time with our hands and we're gonna put it into action. Hopefully, Peter said, "I don't have any silver or gold, but I do have something else I can give you. By the power of Jesus Christ from Nazareth, stand up and walk." Then Peter took the man's right hand and lifted him up. Immediately, the man's feet and ankles became strong. He jumped up, stood on his feet and began to walk. He went into the temple with them, walking and jumping and praising God. How can you apply this to your life today and now? How can I do it? Let me know in the comments. What can you do? What can you take from this scripture? And weave it into your life right now. And all of our lives look different. You probably don't have 10 kids. Maybe you do. So let me know. What does this verse make you feel like doing? I guess it's back to the feeling. What kind of action can you take from this verse? I love that in this verse, Peter commanded him first to stand up and walk. That had to take some faith on Peter's part. So Peter saw Jesus healing people all the time and performing miracles, but Jesus isn't here anymore. So for Peter to take on the Holy Spirit and believe and trust in God and tell this man to stand up and walk, that's amazing. But then he didn't leave it there. That's what's super cool too. He actually grabbed the man with his hand and lifted him up. And then that's when his feet were healed, his ankles became strong. And I think that maybe that's what God is speaking to me. We have the power of the Holy Spirit. We're able to communicate with the Holy Spirit and be connected to God. And we can command things because we can believe and trust in Him. And then we get to work it out. We get to use our hands and grab people in, pull them up. Pull them up, lift them up. You can even use your words and your physical body to create this, well, you know, actually create it, but help God create it through you. This action of a miracle or this response that he gets from this man. This man jumps up, he's leaping, he's walking, he goes into a temple with them. That's another thing. Who can you invite to your church? Or to a small group or to she is connected. That's another thing we can do out of this. So that's all for today. Thank you so much for being here. Tina, I love seeing you in the comments and it's really great when we can come, you know, we have this regularly scheduled time where we can come and get together and we get to talk about. We get to use Facebook to talk about God and what he's doing in our lives. That's pretty amazing. You know, everybody out there is talking about how you can get blocked for this or that. And we're in this group together and we're talking about God. And it's alive and it's available. That is awesome. I also wanted to recognize, you know, the world is a little crazy right now. Some things are happening over in Israel that are so sad. But I just wanna encourage you in it, like Israel is full of God's people. And he's there, he's there with them, he's there with us. And I don't know if you watch the news that much. I'm actually not in the news that much. Um, but I have seen some footage of some things that are happening over there and I just can't believe how evil people can be. And it is just sad. Women and children are in danger. Innocent people are in danger and it can be scary. It could be heavy on your heart. I know it is on mine, so um, just prayers for Israel and the whole world, really. And I just want, I guess what God is speaking to me this second is the people performing those evil acts are gods. They're gods too. So I pray for their hearts as well and the movement of God throughout our world. We're gonna be here live again next Friday at twelve thirty central, one thirty eastern. I hope to see you in the comments. Remember the book of Acts that we are reading in. It's an ongoing thing through us, through you and me. We get to continue God's work. His power is in us. His power is in you. You are powerful. Maybe we can, if you don't get anything else out of today, but remember that God's power is in you and you can walk around like this cuz you are powerful. Happy connecting everyone and have a great weekend.